This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
Okay, in the interest of staying on schedule, I would like to start by thanking everyone for taking time in their schedules to join us this evening. Other than that, as to president's comments, I have none at this point in time. With that, I will ask Mr. Larson if you would please lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible)
It's one of the first times, one of the first times I've heard you that you weren't on the P8, so I was just interested to see how the voice would carry. I will call the meeting to order, but the roll call reflect that all members of the board are present with the exception of Mr. Fair. I do not know if he will be coming and joining us later, and I have not heard from him. With that, before I ask for approval of the agenda, I would like to ask the board's consideration in the agenda of moving two items due to time conflicts. I would like to ask that we move item 7A2, community recognition, right to be right after the approval of the agenda, and item 7C1, board monitoring, to follow the community recognition, then we would immediately get into public comment after that. With those modifications in the order presented in the agenda, do I have a motion?
I don't know.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Paulus? Thank you. We will start with the community recognition.
So at this time, I would invite Mr. Jason Blenker to please join us front and center. So as part of our ongoing efforts to recognize the community partners that we are so fortunate to have here in the school district of Wapaka, it's my honor and privilege to be able to present Jason Blenker with our Community Service Recognition Award in recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students and helping us to create a stronger community. With deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude, the school district of Wapaka on this February 13th of 2018.
Thank you very much. Do I get two seconds?
You sure do.
I would like to thank the school district of Wapaka. It's been an honor and a privilege to be a part of these, part of this learning activity, helping young men and women learn a little bit more about construction, and we're glad to be a part of it and hope we can continue that on in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 7C1, board monitoring. Subject matter being summer school.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for making the adjustments so I could head to Appleton here in a short period of time. Dr. Neen has asked me to put together a summer school, just information of how we did in the summer of 2017. And so, the next seven slides, I'll just kind of briefly go over some of the changes from '16 to '17, how we did, and what we're looking for moving forward. So, Dr. Neen, next slide, please. So, last summer, we started to partner with some more of our community members, Fox Valley Tech being one of them, with hunter safety and babysitting safety. Those were two very popular courses. We filled out pretty fast. We'll be running those again. The CNA is part of the high school and the partners that they work with through the high school, and we'll be doing that again this summer as well. Swimming lessons once again with the city of Wapaka Recreation Center. And then, for the first time, Wapaka Community Theater will be partnered with Children's Community Theater with Annie. Some of the new courses that were added last summer, you'll see in grades four, five through eight in high school, and I will say one of the biggest reasons on one of the slides coming up for the increase in numbers for summer school has to do with the Link Crew, and being able to partner with the high school in their first ever Link Crew endeavors really helped with the numbers in summer school. But those are just a few of the new classes that we added in 2017. So, expenses. The June expenses, you will see with the fees collected and the net costs, both for August and June, and the actual expenses were $1,395.22 for both sessions of summer school, that is K through 12. And then, the staff salary comparison, this one is on there because we did cap it, I believe, at $37.50 last year. So you'll see in 2016, the staff salary amount, 2017, and what it was, and it's a difference of $16,120. One of the questions that I'm asked on a regular basis is how many teachers did not teach summer school because of the change in the salary, and there were just a small amount under three that I'm aware of that chose not to teach for whatever reason from the year before. Transportation costs are there, total transportation expenses, that's an estimate from Mr. Noiki, and that is $942.42. That is including the bus from the WLC down to the rec center every day after the summer school sessions. And then, the enrollment comparison, in 2016, 971 students. In the summer of 2017, last summer, we had 1,452 students. So that was a 49.5% increase. A lot of that increase, again, came from Link Crew. That was a big difference in our enrollment numbers. But the numbers from K8 were also up quite a bit, and I think just having new classes and new interests and inviting in our community partners definitely played a big role in that. And so, our full-time equivalency students for summer school went from 58 to 65.2. We do have to separate out our non-resident students, so those are students that are not members of our district that we allow to come in for summer school. So the actual net increase was 7 FTE from '16 to '17. And so, looking ahead, it would be my recommendation to the board to pass no fees. I think we do lose some children because of the fees that we charge. The total fees without anything, the expense without any fees would be $2,762 last year. So I would make the recommendation to the board if they would pass, where Wapaka summer school does not collect any fees from our students. I'm hoping that that would increase summer school even more. The new summer school window is out, so we've done two weeks in June and two weeks in August. This summer, we're going to be doing three weeks right away in June. Let me just rephrase that. So we'll do session one, session two, and as the high school is doing their semester, is that correct? So it's basically a third semester for high school. So what we did is we put session one, starting on June 11th, going to the 22nd. Session two of summer school will start the following week. Then we take a week break, and then we finish session two that week after the 4th of July. We are also going to put in two weeks prior to school, this is new, where it'll be by invite or by people who just want to come in for all core areas at all levels. So the prior two weeks of school starting, we're hoping to see upwards of 100 kids or more in the district taking courses in reading, math, and writing in the core subject areas right before school starts, kind of a jumpstart into school. So, in addition to the four weeks that we've had, we're adding two more weeks. We're also doing a couple of different things, and Room for Growth is up there. I put online courses because that's something we talk about a lot, but you'll notice in your board packet tonight, there's two contracts, one for myself and one for Mr. Flaton, and we're separating the summer school principal to two different buildings. And as you'll note, in the board packet, it's not passing the district out anymore than it did a year ago, but we felt, working with Dr. Neen and Mr. Flaton, that we can probably make that growth if we have someone here in the building, working on a daily basis and building those relationships, and understanding how the building operates to make summer school grow at the high school. So we're attempting to do that, and that's why you see the two contracts in your board packet. There is still room for growth at the middle school. In the enrichment side of things, I will tell you that the cooking classes are very popular. And one more way we're going to look at, and Mr. Noiki and I have had an initial conversation about possible pickup and drop-off areas within our community and our school district to see if we can add to summer school. And I've talked to a few parents who said they would love to bring their kids to summer school, but they can't get them here, and they live out in different townships. So we're looking into the possibility of adding pickup and drop-off locations to increase summer school and provide transportation for them. So that's just a quick synopsis of summer school from last year and what we're looking at going into this summer. So I'll open it up for any questions.
If we don't have fees, I'm interested in the partnership that we've had with the city, which is their park and rec department. Is that feasible with swimming lessons?
For those types of classes, for hunter safety and for swimming lessons, they'll still have to pay the fees they normally would with those programs. I'm asking for just the courses that we hold on campus, not to ask for fees.
The concept of the two weeks would be held prior to the beginning of school. I certainly understand the jumpstart concept, but what have you heard as to individuals and/or parents that would be supportive of that?
I haven't yet. We're putting together the catalog right now. When we submit the catalog on the website for people to choose classes from, we'll get a pretty good idea as to the popularity of what that might be. And that's how we run summer school. Normally, the catalog will go out and people will register for the classes they want to take. It's at that time when they register if we know we have enough to run that particular course or not. It could be that they're like, no, that's family time, we're not coming in, and we'll see. But I thought we would throw it out there to see if that could be a possibility, not only to grow summer school, but to hopefully get a kickstart for some of those kids, because I will be personally inviting elementary kids based on some of the academics that they show throughout the school year to get them in a little bit quicker, to give them a little extra time to start the school year.
The other thing, if I could just add to that, would be, you know, Link Crew, that is started pretty much later in the school, and that's when the white freshman, there's also a freshman survivor class that we run. I think there's a little bit of precedent that for some students, it already has existed at the high school level.
Oh, Link Crew, refresh my memory, did that start a week before?
Well, the training started a couple of weeks before, but with kids coming in, yeah, it was really that week before. And it wasn't the full week, it was only a day or two here and there for those kids. So some of those seats have been planted.
On an invitation base, they may choose not to come, but we're going to attempt to see if we can, if we can get that, that two weeks period to get some kids in that we know could use the extra help.
What impact would that have on any of our expenses?
Everything is in house.
I'm guessing those aren't baked into the 27th.
No, what you'll see is it'll be staffing expenses more than anything. All the curriculum that we have and need is already in house.
John, how about meals? Did we serve both breakfast and lunch?
We did, and we plan on doing that at the elementary, middle school, and high school this year. Last year, we did not do that at the high school.
And that's subsidized, right?
Yes, it's free for everybody that comes in. Any school district of Wapaka student, whether they're in summer school or not, can come in and have breakfast and lunch.
Can we come in?
Students.
If there are no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, John. Work well done. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number five, public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this point? Yes, sir.
Those of you who don't know me, I'm not very likely to be employed with the district for 26 years, and I'd like to discuss this transportation RFP for a few minutes. Although, you obviously see my email, and you've read it. Okay. We had a meeting today at 10 o'clock, and it addressed a lot of my issues. My impression coming away from it is it's too good to be true, so I'm not buying at this point, but going forward in the future with this, one thing I would like to see is before, if this goes through to the point you hire a contractor, when you're talking to them or interviewing them or however you work it, that they, as say, laborers or COBUs or whoever comes in, they talk with us as drivers too. What are you offering us? What, tell us. Let us ask questions before you hire, who it's, who you're going to hire, you know, if it gets to that point. I would like to see that, or have one or two of us be in that interview process too. And another thing I'd like to bring up is, I would like to talk about some of the stuff in there, but you know, I was told that this is just a starting point tonight, so at what time in the future would be a good time to bring this up, talk about things, you know, would that have to be put on the agenda, or how would this work going forward?
Yeah, so usually what would happen, Andre, is that you would communicate with Lee, Lee would communicate with Carl, and then Carl would communicate with me, I communicate with the board. This public comment time is, is not designed for a dialogue between you and the board, it's really your opportunity to provide food for thought, that what you are already doing.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we were going to discuss this the time you were going to bring it up in the agenda, or if it was this time.
It would be this time.
And like I said, going forward, I mean, I personally would like to be on an agenda when you discover it, or discuss it, rather, you know, so, and I'm sure some of these people here would like to voice their opinion on it. So if that's something possible in the future, I'd like to proceed forward with that.
Very good. We, I can tell you that if the RFP is approved tonight by the board, that is indeed really the initial steps, if you will. Until we get the responses for the RFP back, we don't really know for sure what some of the ramifications or what it may look like, I should probably say, as to, you know, some things with regard to expenses, the employment, the contracts, the wages, all those types of things. There would be a lot of discussion once we receive the responses to the RFPs.
Today, we were pretty much told everything's going to be the same. That's what they're going for. Everything's going to be the same or better. Better buses, better this, better that.
Based on the experience of a number of districts that have done this, that would be correct, but until we actually get the information ourselves, I would be hesitant to say specifically, this is what it's going to look like, until we find out directly from any companies that may submit their responses to the RFP. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes?
I just have one question. I wasn't able to stand reading, just to ask my question. So with all of this, what's going on? What happens to our bus aides? Are they going to, we're going to keep our aides for our handbag buses? What's going to happen? Because not all of our bus aides are aides in classrooms or other things. We have two that are just on the bus.
The answer is yes. And the other answer is why the, to the wage. The wage, when you write an RFP, you basically put in the RFP the parallel. This is the wage structure we want in our RFP, so this is the wages we accept, and our PAs adhere to that. And here's, we need, we are, actually, the RFP will mirror literally the wage structure we have, and they'll compete for that. And what will happen is, in that scenario, that the vendors will try to do better than other vendors and give more than that set wage. It's as similar as the chartwell's experience. Will they have aides on the buses? Yes, because we need aides on buses to literally deal with the children that need them. So that is an absolute necessity, so yes.
So I'm just saying that you're not going to cut off just our regular bus aides and keep the aides that come on the bus from the schools?
No, that's not our intention. Our intention is to mirror the exact same replica we saw with the 44.
Including the buses? Including the buses?
Meaning?
Because I had talked to somebody at Laborers, and they said they wanted to get the exact same buses that they have, and they're not even close to what they need.
I know that when you write up the RFP for the request or proposal, you put literally into the RFP which types of buses you want in that RFP, so we'll be asking for, I'll be working with Lee closely, how that RFP will be managed, but normally, we want the best for our students. We want brand-new buses every five years. We don't want to have that depreciative asset, $175,000 purchased every year and just keep on moving forward in that way. So we'll collectively put together a RFP that mirrors new buses' rotation every five years. What that bus will look like, more than likely, will be the top end bus.
What the options will have, because I haven't yet to see a Laborers or COBUs bus with all the options Wapaka puts on there.
When we write our RFP, we'll put literally the...
The air brakes, the air doors.
Yeah, we'll put it, we'll put, literally, the specifications of the buses will be in there as well. And that, once again, the vendors will compete against each other, and they'll bring even more to the table.
Because with air brakes, we have to take a special test. I just wanted to like to hydro.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, very good. As I said, there is still a ways to go on this, as was just mentioned, we still need to write the RFP and put in there the specifics of what we would like to see, and then we find out what they are able to do, what they're willing to do. And as was mentioned, they, more often than not, companies want to get this kind of business and will compete against each other, and that's what really either drives the price down and/or the quality of buses and other features up. So we will have to see what the responses are. Until we see those, we don't know exactly where this will or won't be going. Okay, there being no other public comments, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I'll start with the January 9th, 2018 regular board meeting.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion or corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. January 26th, 2018 special board meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, discussion, or corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That moves us on to item number seven, communications.
So this is School Bus Driver Recognition Week, February 12th through the 16th. As you have heard me say many times, our school bus drivers are the first point of contract, or contact for our students and the last point of contact for our students. So our bus drivers have the opportunity to really make every child's day start the right way. So it is with deep heartfelt thanks that the district sincerely recognizes our school bus drivers, and although, you know, the, the third-party vendor is, is on the table tonight for consideration, it is certainly meant as no disrespect to our drivers. We do appreciate the job that you do each and every day, and it's a, it's a very important one. You deliver 2,200 students more or less home, to and from school every day, so we, we recognize you and we value you. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That moves us on to communications, item B, district administrators' report.
So the second Friday in January is the second student count date used to determine state aid based on enrollment. The membership was 2,151 on January 12th, 2018, and was 2,165 on the second Friday of January in 2017, so a difference of roughly 14 students. On February 9th, the district rolled out the new telehealth or AMWEL rooms for its staff members. District employees will be able to seek healthcare consultation in private and confidential settings without having to take time off and without incurring out-of-pocket expenses. Special thank you to Mr. Hayek for leading that initiative. Since December of 2017, the district administration, in concert with local law enforcement, has been conducting impromptu lockdown drills to review building preparedness. Thank you to all of our staff and parents for their understanding as we conduct our safety drills. The Wapaka Works Initiative has received publicity from around the state and from states as far away as Tennessee recently. Administrators from around the state and country have made inquiries about our implementation of the academic and career plan known affectionately as Wapaka Works. The Wapaka High School Varsity HS team clinched the first conference championship, or their first conference championship, rather. The Wapaka High School Forensics Team also took first place at the Northeast Conference Forensics Meet to continue its eight-year conference-winning streak. The Wapaka High School Dance Team took first in jazz and second in palm at the state competition last weekend. And then finally, congratulations go out to all of our retirees, Rhonda Guskie, Mary Jo Tamaris, Mary Trice, David Larson, Dale Felton, Mark Polabitzki, and Julie Idon. Their local cumulative impact to education totals more than 200 years of experience, and when we look at the experience that they've had in other districts, it's upwards of 250 years. So that's quite, quite a, a lot of experience that will be leaving our district and will certainly be missed. So congratulations to all of our retirees. That concludes my report.
Congratulations and our thanks, obviously.
Yes.
You mentioned chess forensics in high school, or the girls' dance. Do we know how anybody did in wrestling from the regional that are moving on to sectional?
Two guys grew up.
Two? Good.
Thank you.
Very good. And that is this weekend? Okay. All right, very good. With that, we will move on to, I know I'm the one that changed these around. School Board, reports on meetings attended. Anyone have to, have a meeting that they went to that they'd like to report on?
Yes, but not this month.
Not this month?
Yes, please. I respectfully request being able to report on my attendance at the school board convention.
Okay. How much time do you want us to allot for you?
I have two, but Sandy does too. We were both part of two things at different schools this month. The Wapaka Middle School, we were asked to judge the spelling bee. Remember?
Yes, we were talking about meetings.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought it was...
If you could speak up just a little bit for the people out here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were in a meeting. I mean, on visits. School visits.
That's fine, too.
Okay. So Sandy and I were both part of judging through, at the Wapaka Middle School for the spelling bee for middle school and elementary students. It was an awesome experience. So many young people with nerves and smiles and whatever. It was a great experience. And then, after I visited several of the classrooms and just talked to some of the teachers and the kids, it was lunchtime, and they commented on the good food. They liked the change in food and whatever. And then, we also were asked, I think a lot of us were asked to judge or whatever, sample some of the products that the students from the intro to business class, the students' intro to business class. So we went one of the afternoons a couple of weeks ago, and there were probably 20 students that did presentations, marketing presentations for, to market different products like Oreos and Kool-Aid and, you know, different chocolate products and whatever. So it was an awesome experience to see how the young people are going forward into business classes and thinking about marketing and communications and how you brand a product. After that, I was able to visit several of the classrooms. One of the most interesting things is I went into the Wapaka Works program, and they had a private investigator come in and talk with the students that afternoon. Apparently, they try to have a speaker once a week to come in and talk to the students. And this was a private investigator from Green Bay, and he did a wonderful job of talking to the students about different careers and what his career involves, and how he investigates crimes and what all is involved, and I think with the popularity of crime shows nowadays, the kids were really kind of enthralled with this message. I went into Mrs. Reeves' class, and they had just completed Dante's Inferno, asked me about it, I had never read it, so I came out of there with a reading assignment and a book.
So how are you doing on it?
Not real well, but it's on my to-do list. But it was interesting to see their reaction to it, and they were doing projects about it, so. They were two great visits.
And you were part of it? I was, and I enjoyed it very much, and I think the lesson of Dante's Inferno is never make a bullet in half.
That's true, yeah.
It was, it was really fun. That was the second year I had done the spelling, so it was something for you. And it was fun to go to Mrs. Drew's class, and you're right, the students were very impressive. It was really fun to talk with them, and there's never enough time to talk with them. Glad to be invited, glad to be able to do this. Glad to be invited, glad to be able to do this.
Well, I've got one, I'm not as excited as you two or had as much excitement, but I visited the chain school, and Rhonda gave me a quick tour of the building, and she explained a lot of things I didn't know about chain, I'll tell you that. I thought I knew quite a bit about it, but I don't. She gave me a lot of information, and she also gave me a lot of information about the charter school, and it was good information, it was very interesting. Then I took time to visit four classrooms, and it just by luck, they happened to be kindergarten and first grade, it was my speed, so. Anyway, Mrs. Wolf's class, they were doing math, and it was very interesting. I don't remember doing math that way, but...
They do it differently.
They do it differently. And then Mr. Kay, and I would tell you who he is, but I can't pronounce it. You could help me.
Kazinsky.
Kazinsky. And you could probably guess where he took us once I got there. It was the computer lab. So that was a very bad place to take me. But the kids were really enjoying it, and you could see they were really learning. They were really into it. Lastly, I went to Ms. Fletcher's, and I got there, and they were going into game time, and I didn't understand any of their games, so I wasn't very helpful there. So it was still a wonderful visit, and I enjoyed chain school very much.
We will get you to Mr. Felt's statistics class before he leaves and see how.
I can understand that a little bit better.
Okay. With that, we go to item C, which is upcoming meetings.
Yes, we have a special board workshop on February twenty-seventh. It will be our legal update with Shayna Lewis, leading our governance council. I believe that's the correct terminology for chain, okay, charter. As well as any board members who are interested, and the topic, of course, is open meetings and running efficient meetings.
What time is that going to be?
That is at five o'clock, correct?
Yes. The governance, yes, five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five until six thirty.
Sure.
And then we've got our regular board meeting scheduled for March thirteenth, and that is at five fifteen.
Thank you. Item D, administrator orders.
So item number one has become a bit of a regular item on our agendas, and most likely will be as we find our way through this opportunity known as charter schools. We've got some more amendments to the charter contract, and at this point, I think I would ask either Megan or Rhonda to, and certainly with assistance from Sandy, to outline the changes before the board tonight.
Sure. So we heard back from Latoya, she's a very busy woman. The federal grant is out, and she's kind of leading the way for it. So our contract, she gave us some guidelines to get our code from the state, and so there were pretty minor changes. Two of them had to deal with the insurance, so they needed to see the liability insurance and then understand how that liability insurance was going to be affected by the creation of the charter school. They wanted to know the terms of the contract, so when was that contract going to take place, over what period of time? And the last one was the grades that would be added in which specific years. So that was not clear in the contract prior. And so those are the changes we've made. We also took out school district employees from our governance council for preparation for the federal grant, and so those are the changes that we are asking be approved this evening.
Good. Any questions?
So the board should have received for its review a clean version, a redline version, and a highlighted version?
Maybe not the highlighted. There were so few changes that we did the redline.
Sandy had indicated for me to put in the packet only the redline.
Okay.
The clean copy is here for signature, but you had said not to put it at the front.
Thank you.
Point on a slightly red line, I appreciate that. It's easier to see what the changes are, so. Okay, everybody's had a chance to see the redline version. Are there any questions with the amplification that we just received? Okay, that I will accept a motion?
I move that we approve this amended charter.
Second.
Okay, motion to move the, to amend the charter contract as presented. And second, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Excuse me, Cheryl, do you have the copy for signature?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is achievement gap reduction.
Please.
We probably are familiar with the old Sage program, the student guarantee of achievement that's renamed achievement gap reduction. It still has the same guidelines that you'll have, you could choose to have eighteen-to-one student ratio in kindergarten through third, or you could have a reading tutor or some kind of coaches. But for our past year, we have selected the eighteen-to-one achievement gap strategy, and in exchange for that funding, it's a five-year grant, we need to present to you both a mid-year and end-of-year report every year, listing the specific reading and math goals in kindergarten, first, second, and third grades in our district. So you'll see that all attached. This is just the mid-year check, and you can see growth in all areas, reading and math, all grade levels, and you will see that again at the end of the year.
Okay. Everybody received the information as outlined in the attachment to the electronic version or Steve in the printed, I guess. Any questions?
Is this what you would have expected, or hoped for?
Yes, we switched, we're measuring now at the first grade level with a different test. So we have a very small number of questions that measure math scores, so they looked a little low to us, but it's definitely something that always gets us thinking and is a good way to track the achievement of those younger students that don't take before we do.
Has that always been eighteen-to-one, or was that fifteen-to-one?
It was fifteen-to-one way back when, but it's been eighteen-to-one for a few years.
Okay, I'm remembering way back when.
That was a real long time.
Pardon?
I think it was.
How long has Sage been on?
Ten years, probably.
Yeah.
It's been AGR for two years now. And in exchange for getting the funding in order to enable those class sizes, we need to show how, so that's why.
All right, this requires no action, it was informational. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, with that, we'll move on to item D three, transportation RFP.
Ask Mr. Hayek to bring this item forward.
If you write it back, and you can see that this is a request to look at options, whether there's a cost savings or not, that in the first stages of the RFP process would be for board approval for me to submit one. With my analysis that's included in the packet, you can see that early on, my projections are about a three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar savings per year going forward, which would be about two-point-one million after a five-year period. One of the things we talked about in the meeting this morning is that the inherent value and worthiness of all, in each position in the district is...
If I may, you say the meeting this morning, that was not a board meeting, so if you could explain?
That was a committee. It was basically, I had a meeting with all the bus drivers to answer questions and their concerns going forward. And one of the things we talked about is that there is a shortage of bus drivers in the nation. Basically, bus drivers have leverage, and the leverage is that, just as it is with Chartwell's, when we hired Chartwell's for our food service program last year as a contracted service, that all those individual employees and food service employees, I consider they are our district employees, and the vendor is literally under our auspices and is driven by us to satisfy us. So it's not an aspect of a devaluation of their inherent value or their worthiness in the district, that is absolute, as Mr. or Dr. Ian spoke to earlier, that being they are the first encounter of an adult in the morning and the last encounter is crucial, they play a huge role in a bonding position with those children and the parents as well. So we, one of the things we talked about is comparable wages. I've talked to two vendors already prior to see what their wage scale was, it's very comparable. What we'll do is mirror that in the RFP process, embed that, this is what we want. We also embed in that process that we will have, we want these, we want brand-new buses, state-of-the-art buses every five years. Our location is, we currently spend one hundred and seventy-five thousand, earmarked for a depreciative asset going into the budget each year. And what that means, as soon as you have spent seventy-five thousand dollars on a mull-in bus, someone could argue, but there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar bus and a seventy-five-thousand-dollar bus, there's a reason that one is two-hundred thousand and one is seventy-five thousand. But as soon as you buy a depreciative asset of a bus, a bus is one of the most depreciative assets one can buy. You buy it for seventy-five thousand, you're lucky to get twenty thousand dollars for it as soon as it leaves the lot. So that eliminates, that's part of the cost savings, and then we can only afford two each year, whereas this RFP would say every five years, you're going to get these brand-new buses. In this process, there is an RFP, so there is, I know, we tried to talk about the alleviation of their fear and to try to, as a parallel, the wages would be there, the routes would be there, the same aspects of the wages would be there, the retirement package is actually better if they have current Wisconsin retirement, that is, that piece, what they have invested stays, and they move into a more, so probably a 401K. But the aspect of this is intent was to see if there was cost savings moving forward. And we also know that when we put into, when I write an RFP, which I've done in other districts, and I had a similar experience ten years ago when I was in a different district and had the same concerns with the bus drivers at that point, and the same situation occurred. And in that district, it was the second or third-largest district in the state of Wisconsin geographically, so the budget of transportation was larger. But that equated to a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar savings per year, five years compounded, you know what that dollar figure is, that dollar amount can be used for, and you had better buses, and the employees were satisfied. And what these vendors would do is, they're making a commitment to the district because they want our business. They're really going to come into the district and do something like this, if they win the bid, that they'll put probably a five-to-ten-million-dollar investment into the district. They'll be losing money on the top end, hoping they can make money on the back end, and they want to keep our business, because they'll be literally buying land and establishing roots in your district, and they will want to keep all our bus drivers, they will want to keep all the employees they have, because they have shortages as well, and they will move this into, the idea is they would transition, take this where we can't take it. And so you're go, I had the same conversation with the food service, fifty people exactly in this room, and their same fears were there. What happened is that although those food service workers, the district was giving a one-point-two-six percent raise, the parallel of, in the contract, here's what we're paying our hourly rate employees, instead, they all received a three percent raise going forward, and our bus man and our food service director received a ten-thousand-dollar annual salary raise. So they will do whatever they can to keep our business after making a five-to-ten-million-dollar investment in the district, and they would adhere to it, because the history proves that they would build a state-of-the-art facility, they would run charter buses through that, there'd be more opportunities for those employees to even have more routes. And so if indeed the cost comes in, as I anticipate it, then it would be worthy of looking at it. But what would happen in the process also would be, there would be a fuel escalator clause written to that, so when you're writing a RFP for the process that you can't all of a sudden come in, you don't have any caps on it, that's, so that is controlled. And the big thing is our liability. Our hugest, or the biggest liability within the school district is school buses, is the liability of transporting those children safe, and we do an excellent job to and from to athletic events all over the state of Wisconsin. But that's a big-ticket item, because it's a huge responsibility, and that cost would go away as well. So this is really a kind of a, how do we look as a finance director of your district? How do I see the big picture? Where can we have cost savings? Where can we still have an absolute great product and all our employees can be satisfied, which I still consider those employees to be our employees? I still consider all the food service workers to be our employees? So I don't see that, we're just playing a vendor to do the betting of that task of buying the depreciative asset, setting up the building and moving forward. We dictate, we're in charge of how those routes go, we're in charge of what we want. And it doesn't change any of the school district rules or the bus behavior or their communication with the principals. It's basically moving, transitioning or transcending into a different realm. And I know fear and change is part of life, but I think sometimes that I'm just seeking some permission here to see if this is a cost benefit to the district moving forward, because we all know that the next biennial budget is not good for the state of Wisconsin. So what will happen is, school district revenues will be reduced, state revenues will be reduced. So how do we get ahead of that game and still have a great product? Well, I think this is the way to look in the future, and I think it's almost like the Native Americans say that you look seven years into your future, and I think that's strategic management, and I think it'd be stolen for them, just saying. And so the concept would be that we're looking in the future for our budget where we are, so we don't get behind the game. And that's kind of the long and short of it, probably really long. You're welcome. And so that's why, that's what I'm seeking to do.
Can you tell me, what's the starting wage for a bus driver?
Oh, please help me out.
In our district, it's thirteen forty-five.
What does it cost on a new bus?
A new bus in our district is roughly seventy-five thousand per bus, and we usually try to earmark for two buses, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget each year. The buses that they'll bring to the table, because organizations such as, and I'm not sure who will lend, there'll be sixteen vendors perhaps in flight, and what happens is we'll narrow it down to three vendors, and when that occurs, we'll look at the cost analysis and then I'll bring it to the board, and we'll do a job interview of those three candidates. We may not take the low bid, we may not take any of them, and there will also be bid bond in there that if they can't adhere to that contract of a twenty-five thousand or fifty-thousand-dollar bid bond, that they would have to pay us, the fifty thousand will move to the next vendor. Done it before, and if she took in the cash before for other districts, because then it moved forward. But all of them will, it will be a board decision, and they were part of the interview process, and I thought, just, yeah, it probably would be good to have one of the bus drivers on that committee as well. If that board would like that, I'm not going to say that, that should be that. The new buses, about two-hundred thousand, they'll be bringing about two-hundred thousand dollar, two-hundred fifty to two-hundred thousand dollar bus to the, probably a flat-front bus, but we'll work with that in our RFP, because maybe Lee or their team doesn't want that. But they'll be bringing that kind of bus, and why can they buy that kind of bus? Because they're nationwide. They can, they're buying hundreds of new buses just off the, they're getting a huge quantity discount, while we're buying two buses brand-new every two years. They're just buying hundreds of buses every year just on contract, almost like a government purchase.
How many hours per week do our bus drivers put in?
On the low end, it's twenty, and some are as many as thirty-point-five.
Thirty-point-five?
And then we've got four full-time employees who work eight hours a day, so four who work forty hours.
You say the upper range of thirty-point-five, I think you said?
About thirty-point-five.
Okay. Does that include some of the other extra trips that they will take for...
Strictly, just based on AM and PM routes and midday routes, if you have a midday route. The extracurriculars for field trips and athletics would be outside of that number.
And mechanics and the people who maintain the equipment?
Yes, they would, well, what they'll do is they, they'll have a bus manager, they would love to steal. Yes, they would. Well, what they'll do is they, they'll have a bus manager they would love to steal. They would love to just take, the easiest mechanism for them is to take what we have and move forward. It's easy, and then say, and then make it happen. That's the easiest transition for them. It will take them, and talking to them, just, they would build, all the companies are going to build a state-of-the-art facility. They have mechanisms and templates such as McDonald's. You look at the McDonald's, they're tearing it down. They have a template that they build. They buy two acres of land at the best location possible for the most visibility. And they'll buy that and they'll put up their brand-new facility with a break room and pits so you can drive underneath, you can drive your bus in, and the mechanic can be under, no hoist mechanism. And then they'll have tiers around there, and then a special place to wash your buses. With the deal, one of the concepts, their business, though the school district of Wapaka mandated on the bus, but they'll probably have their Lamberts, Cobusson, or Durham, or their name on their buses. And they want that bus to look great because they're selling a product. They're not just selling that bus, they're selling their charter. And they're going to be running a charter. We all know that Cobusson and Lamberts, I'm just using them as an example, run charters right through, and they go out to mobile stations right now for their charter. But they'll be running charter, they'll want to increase, they're looking at this as a business model, long-term investment. So they're going to be putting, they will put more money into than they'll be making out. They're looking, that's why they'll come back the next five years with a great contract. Because they'll, they'll, they really have, they're looking at a return on investment probably three years out.
The district by its geographical position, due to Highway 10, 54, 22, it does offer some appeal to third-party vendors. So I don't doubt that that will be considered in the, in the bidding of the project.
How many vendors did you, you mentioned a number, and I didn't write it down. How many? Would you anticipate me respond?
I would anticipate that there will be a pre-vendors' meeting with a date. I'd anticipate, and that'd be before the RFP is due so they can ask questions. And I'll have the questions answered exactly the same in writing afterwards. That would be about 12 vendors. My guess would be 12 vendors would come to the table. And then they would submit that RFP on that deadline, on a deadline, specific deadline, by a certain time, let's say noon on April 1st. Maybe that's not the right date because I don't have that date written. It's a comp, it's probably a 70-page manuscript with all our routes and all our wage schedules and all our specifications adhered to it. I have one already, ready to, I'm working on, that I've used, used already in other districts. And then they'll also have a few escalator clauses. And then that would be, then that would, the three vendors, I would look at the top three vendors and see if they was even worthy compared to our cost, annual cost, and project them forward. And if it wasn't, it would be done. And, but if I could see that those three vendors could do what this, what I anticipate they can do, it would be brought to the board for a set, set of questions, just as you do in an interview process with an employee. And more than likely depends upon how the board would want to proceed. I would directly ask every vendor the same questions, and the board could interject with all their questions and concerns, and then we move forward. And after, after that was done, the board could decide.
Yep.
Anything. They could decide, scrap it, take this aside, we don't like the first vendor, even though the cost is better. And then, then we could associate that. And if indeed it was, after that discussion, they could set another meeting and think about it some more, and then have a, at another board meeting, decide or award that contract. And then that contract, then, and then immediately thereafter, we will.
How many drivers do we have that are putting in between 20 to 30 hours a week?
25.
25.
So you're looking for a recommendation? Could you move the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, not really looking for a recommendation at this point, looking to see if the board wishes to pursue with the release of an RFP.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
Yes.
I would move that the board authorize the district to move forward with an RFP.
Okay, a motion to move forward with an RFP. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I'd like to see what the viability of, in that RFP stipulating a minimum wage for the bus drivers, the $15 an hour or greater. And based on 30 or 25 workers, we gave them a pay increase of $1.50 per hour, they're working an average of 25 hours. That's an added cost of $1,000 to make a living wage.
I believe that the process usually provides the board with an opportunity to review the RFP prior to its final release.
Right, okay.
So.
I'm just tossing that out there as you're crafting up different scenarios. I appreciate that we look into ways that we can pay our strong.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion?
I just want to make a couple of comments. Most districts, well, let me back up for a second. Approximately 70 to 75% of the school districts in Wisconsin contract their transportation services out.
What's the percentage?
70 to 75%. Right around 295 out of the 426 school districts have a third-party vendor for their transportation services. The reason is oftentimes for efficiencies and economics. The school district of Wapaka has been fortunate and very blessed to be on solid financial ground. This may not be an efficiency that the board wishes to pursue once we have the information in front of us. It may be an efficiency that the board will need to consider in future years when we have no longer been able to levy under, under that, or under levy. You know, when we have hit our maximum taxing authority, we will need to find tools of efficiency. The district is committed to excellence in education, and that means we are focused on student achievement and creating opportunities for students. Support services such as food service, transportation, custodial services are all necessary in the school district. But our focus must remain on student achievement. And so, while this administration will frequently bring initiatives to the board that cost money, it's also our obligation to bring opportunities to save money to the board. So that is just a quick, I guess, premise as we enter into this process. It's really the philosophy of our administrative group, so I just wanted to share that.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Aye, yes.
Just, what did we said? Were you requesting $2 an hour of raise just on the starting wage or for all the wages?
This is premature to be talking about that.
So that's nothing to discuss right now?
No, we, the, the district will come up with a draft RFP, and the board will look at that at that time.
My concern with something like that is if you're starting them off at $15 an hour. I've been here 26 years and I'm only making 17 to 50. So you just took like nine years of wages away from you.
Yep.
Something to think about on that end.
Sure. We certainly, when, when we go through any budgeting process, and the RFP in essence is a budgeting process in many respects, we will certainly look at those for amplifications.
The reason why I brought it up is just, there's different priorities certainly. And we could put our money into $200,000 school buses that we put every five years, we could put them into paying people more. And that money gets recirculated back into our community. So I think it's worth reflecting on that.
Questions with regard to the motion itself at this point or discussion? I'll call the question.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Shambel?
Yes.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. Anyway, that will move on to an update of policy 322.
Please. Hopefully, this is a little shorter than the seven-year one Carl just gave us, but those are seven years in the future, so we just lie. As we look at this, this is the board policy 322 is just the school day in terms of the hour, like what times the school day run. As you know, last month, we talked about having the Wednesday early release we approved. We said we had to adjust the school day. And so we said this memo will be coming, that once we knew the two-hour release was approved, we would adjust this just because board policy states that what times the school day are. So quite simply, if you were to scroll down, just has the changes of what we came to. We met as administrators all with Lee to talk about, you know, because the buses are very important. We talked about arriving at school and whatnot, and how does that all connect? So those were the, between the administrators, Lee and myself, what we came up with for the hours for next year, the school day, with what we had to add. So at this point, we'd be looking for approval of our policy 322 at these times for next year.
With this, I do have a question. With this adjustment in times, how, what is the impact? Since this is bus appreciation, bus driver appreciation as well as transportation, as well as everything else, how does this impact these adjustments, the bus scheduling?
Six minutes.
Pardon?
Six minutes.
I, yeah, but we're changing the amount of time for the middle school, a different amount than where for the high school. And I realize it's a miniscule amount in many ways, but with what you do, schedules are incredibly important. So that adjustment, since it's a shorter amount at the middle school and a longer amount at the high school based on the process, is not problematic?
It is not.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Not really.
Not really?
We said we did discuss a long time of, if you had to start for the end, and so we kind of balance back and forth. It's how the buses all do, interact and drop offs.
Seven point five is really early for middle school. I mean, most kids are, hey, I have studies showing that kids need to start later because their brains don't engage that early.
So we'd love to go to from noon to eight, that's a different discussion.
That'd be great.
Different, the central brain would be a different.
They should get up at 5:00.
Oh, a milk and a cow, whatever. I move approval.
Motion approved to, a motion to approve code 322 as presented.
Second.
And a second by, Steve, you did that first?
Yep.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. An annual update on Wapaka Way 2K30?
Yes, so it was a year ago that Sandy Robinson and the other design team members were, were busy planning for our hashtag Wapaka Way 2K30 community conversation. We're coming up on our one-year reunion. And as we indicated to the community stakeholders who participated almost a year ago, our intent then is the same as it is now, and that's to hold a one-year reunion, allow for a trueing of the compass, if you will, for us to illustrate to the community at large our efforts over the past year, for the community to affirm those efforts or to perhaps redirect our focus. So it is our intention to post it as a, as a special board meeting, anticipating that we would have a quorum, but that no official business of the board would be conducted at the one-year reunion.
Any idea when, when, what kind?
Yeah, we're looking at the week of April 23rd. There are a couple of very busy nights, of course, Wednesday night doesn't have anything on it from the district's perspective, but that is, of course, family night. So we're studying that, that time in the calendar and trying to find the date that's going to work out the best. So that will be one of the tasks and conversations in front of our design team. Is that next week, Art? It is next week, yes, on the 22nd. So I am looking for approval to schedule that as a, as a board meeting again, not anticipating any action.
Is there a motion?
So.
Motion to schedule, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call vote?
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Shambel?
Yes.
Steve Hackett?
Yes.
Demetri Martin?
Yes.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. Is that all entertained and motioned? Item 10 on your agenda?
I move adjournment in the closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 19.85, no, 19.85 paragraph 1 guarantee regarding administrative staffing, followed by closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 19.85 paragraph 1 guarantee and paragraph 2 to discuss the staff discipline issue and 19.85 paragraph 1 guarantee regarding discussion on potential sale of district property.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Could you please repeat that? Second.
Motion and second. We will take a roll call vote on the motion, and I'm sorry, I know it's long-winded, but according to state statutes, I have to repeat it.
No, no, I'm kidding.
No, I'm not. I'm not. A motion and second to adjourn into closed session in accordance with the Wisconsin statute, 19.85 paragraph 1 guarantee regarding administrative staffing, followed by a closed session in accordance with the Wisconsin statute, 1.85 paragraph 1 guarantee and guarantee F to discuss staff discipline issue, and 19.85 paragraph 1 guarantee regarding discussion on potential sale of district property. Roll call vote, please.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Shambel?
Yes.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. So we will take a very brief break so that, yeah, so that we can break down. And before we move into closed session, thank you everyone for your attendance tonight. Very much appreciated.